The meeting of the Waco City Council on April 19th, 2022 to order at 3:02 PM. For the record, all council members are present. Please join me for a moment of silence. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone prepared to speak on a work session agenda item? Saying no one is registered, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with the report from the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor and council. Good to see you this afternoon. I do not have any changes to the agenda today, so I'll move real quickly into an employee recognition item. And I wanted to give a shout out to staff from several departments, actually, after their recent work to put together the Total Eclipse 2024 event and press conference. I really enjoyed seeing how the team produced that work. Certainly Monica Settlemeyer, our new director of communications and marketing, also our relatively new assistant city manager, Lisa Blackman, who's somewhere, oh, sitting right next to Monica, sorry. Dan Quant and Carla Pendigraft, as well as Susan Morton from the CBB and Kim Coogan from Legal, all did a really nice job on that, supporting our partners at Baylor Lowell Observatory, as well as the Discovery Network, to put on just a great introductory press conference. The event made me real excited for what's to come in April of 2024 and really showed us how we can make the most of the opportunity to get as many eyeballs on Waco from around the world. Additionally, the press conference was helpful for me and the team because it finally gave us a chance to see the mayor bring out those 80-year goggles that he talks so much about. And, yeah, that's them.
Like, no, and this is gonna backfire on him at some point. And then he goes up and puts his eyeball to it, but knows, he's like, this is gonna backfire on Dylan at some point.
I just am, I am though truly appreciative of the staff. I think it shows what a really well-aligned team can do together.
Let the record reflect that we were supposed to look through this telescope in the middle of the daytime. This was not a night-time telescope.
That's your story and you're sticking to it.
I was expressing concern over my judgment after this was in the newspaper.
Public hearing wise, we do have eight public hearings on the agenda today, and Clint's gonna cover those later in the work session. Clint Peters, our director of development services. Resolutions today, I'm gonna highlight four that are on the agenda, and we had a relatively light group of resolutions today of 14. The first I wanted to highlight is Resolution 2022-246, which authorizes the city manager to use a competitive sealed proposal procedure for the procurement of custodial services for city facilities. As some on the council will recall, five years ago, in November of 2017, the council heard a presentation regarding building attendant services for the 30 or so city buildings. And subsequently, in January 2018, the council approved a contract with UBM Enterprise, Inc., for initially a two-year term with three additional one-year renewals. And we're seeking to go out for a competitive sealed proposal because in about 11 months, that contract will run out of renewals, and it'll be time to see who wants to service our city facilities. We've now grown the number of buildings to 34 buildings, and the current setup includes the majority of those buildings being serviced by the contractor. But we do still have a number, a small number of facilities that are serviced by seven full-time city of Waco employees and two part-time city of Waco employees. As the council likely recalls, that was the approach we used to retain the members of the, our custodial staff that were city of Waco employees and allow them to work through retirement on our payroll. With this resolution, we are requesting permission to go out for bid. Again, we have 11 months left on the contract, so that gives us enough time to deliberate options in the coming months.
Bradley, does that also, will that take care of our city of Waco staff? Because I remember when we did this the first time, we got a lot of, of our employees wondering if they were gonna have a job. So to ease their mind that they're not gonna be fired or they're not gonna be replaced.
Yeah, I think the, the five years we've been in certainly speaks significantly to those team members that we, we've kept them on payroll with the method that we chose, the council chose to use. And until I get council guidance to use a different approach, that's, that's, we'll continue down that path. Meaning they'll, we'll continue to use contractors for most of it and staff for the rest. Of course, the market's gonna have to tell us something when we go out for bid using this proposal, but until I hear council direction otherwise, that's the approach we'll take. The second resolution I wanted to highlight was Resolution 247, which the council will recall at the last council meeting, you approved a contract with Torrey Design Consortium for Architectural Services for the new Penguin exhibit at the Cameron Park Zoo. Torrey Design is, of course, the team that will architecturally and from an engineering standpoint, design the Penguin exhibit. They've designed all sorts of zoo exhibits around the world, including those for lions and tigers and bears.
Oh, my.
That was actually Jennifer's line, y'all stole it. And, but as a follow-up to that action, tonight on the agenda, we have the selection of a construction manager at risk for the Penguin exhibit, and the recommended vendor is Jacoby Brothers Construction out of Tyler, Texas. Their role, assuming the council approves it, will be to represent the city of Waco throughout the construction process with the goal of keeping construction costs in-line with the overall construction budget. We're, as a team, the staff and the council, I know as well, are real excited to be advancing forward on the Penguin exhibit and the remainder projects on the bond program, and really working to ensure that McLennan County voters are delivered the projects that they approved a few years back. Additionally, we're proud to be supporting the partnership between the city of Waco and McLennan County, because as y'all know, the McLennan County supports the debt that pays for these projects on the city of Waco property. Construction groundbreaking is anticipated by the end of this year, and hopefully we'll have Penguins out there in the next couple of years.
Bradley, I really appreciate just, as construction costs have become more difficult to manage, the thoughtfulness that our entire staff has put towards doing what they always do, which is putting first-in-class facilities for our residents and citizens to be able to enjoy, but also stewarding the dollars that taxpayers are contributing to this very carefully. And I know that there's been, for this particular matter, a couple of extra hurdles because of rising costs, and just appreciate the thoughtfulness and willingness to work in partnership that I've seen our city staff exert through this.
And I'll just echo the mayor, that I appreciate the work that everybody, and you highlight, both y'all highlighted, just the county and the city and the Zoological Society all working together, Johnny and Terry and Lisa Blackman, doing a great job of heading up the city's voice in that, and working together in this kind of a weird time of the economy where, where the building costs are going up. So we're all trying to figure out the conundrum together, but I appreciate the, the society and the city and the county and the cooperation there.
Definitely. The last two resolutions I'll highlight are somewhat related. 253 and 254 deal with water maintenance contracts. The first is 253. It exercises our third one-year renewal option for existing valve maintenance with Hydromax USA. The reason I wanted to highlight this is, you know, we contract out the cleaning of these valve boxes, and we exercise the valves and provide data, the contractor will provide data back to the city on the conditions of the valves. And the reason that's important is we have over 10,000 valves in our network. And this work that Hydromax is taking on really preserves the city's ability to limit water line shut-offs to smaller areas. So like when we walked to the freeze sometime, months ago, obviously, we were able to isolate outages in water service to a smaller geographic area and affect fewer customers because our valves are in good working order. Give you a sense of the work that's required to complete the contract requirements for valve turning to exercise them, a two-person crew heads out and travels to each location, sets up traffic control and performs the cleaning and exercising, takes about an hour per valve. Resolution 254 similarly exercises our first one-year renewal option for existing fire hydrant maintenance, again with the same firm, Hydromax. From a fire hydrant standpoint, we have 5,700 of those, and the contract seeks to inspect and exercise one-fourth of those each year, which means every four years, every hydrant gets a look and gets exercised and opened up to make sure that it works. We also conduct flow testing to ensure water pressures are appropriate throughout the system and throughout the city. All that is very important for both water operations and moving water across the city, but it's also very important for fire suppression, including, it gets a deep dive and review each time we have our ISO ratings. To complete that work under the contract, to give you a sense of that, a two-person crew is required to go out to each hydrant, set up traffic control, and it takes about an hour and a half per hydrant. So staff estimates on both of these, you know, to, the cost to contract and privatize this work is about 13% less, to use an outside vendor, than if we were doing it ourselves, when you factor in the vehicle costs and personnel costs. Appreciate the water team's thoughtfulness here, and thank you all for giving me a moment to kind of explain a backend operational matter that most people don't think about, but they sure care about when they need it.
Well, I think it's just always a great opportunity to point out the ISO Class 1 rating. Given that less than 1% of cities in the country have received this award, it's highly competitive and highly prestigious, and a direct benefit that maybe you said but maybe didn't was that, is that, our homeowners in Waco pay less in their insurance premiums than they otherwise would because we're able to achieve this rating. So I appreciate this, not only because it's thoughtful for those families who might be, I mean, really find themselves in a really hard situation when their house is on fire, but also for every Waco family who is avoiding some of the insurance premiums that they would otherwise be paying.
That's correct, Mayor. I'm going off memory, but I believe in that ISO rating, this represents about 40% of the scoring, 50, chief? Yeah, 50% of the scoring system. So they, they look very heavily at your water system and water operations when they factor in the ISO ratings.
Great.
Ordinance-wise, we have one on the agenda today, and it's a second reading. And if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
I've got a couple of just comments on the resolutions. First of all, that 244, where we're extending Gateway Boulevard. I like the way that staff has worked with the developers on, I think this is an important connection, Gateway Boulevard from Bagby to Interstate 35, with all of the new businesses moving in out there. I think it's gonna make a lot of sense for the connectivity. But particularly like the way that we, when we put impact fees in a couple of years ago, as we feather them in over the next three years, four years, I like how we've kind of monetized that impact fee to incentivize the builder or the developer to build that road. So working with developers and getting creative on, on how we use the incentives and impact fees and the other revenue processes that we have there. So I want to commend you on that and staff. The other thing I just wanted to point out, and it's really a combination of 250 and 255, the two, the one where we're fixing up the Caterpillar Dozer and the other one where we're fixing up the wastewater purifier. And this is where, when we see equipment deteriorating a little bit, we can either buy a new one, lease one, or fix what we have. And I commend staff for doing that analysis and maximizing the value in these two particular resolutions of, let's fix what we have in these times where costs are going up, and it's, you still get the benefit in a certified one or one that we can fix up and save, in one case, a half a million dollars. And in the purifier, it wasn't mentioned, but saving material money to the, to the city and the taxpayers. So even though those are little things that kind of flying into the radar, I appreciate you guys doing that analysis.
Thanks for highlighting those, council member. The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2022-243 through 256, except for 248, where councilman Borderood and Palmer have completed affidavits of substantial interest. Are there any other items council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove Resolution 2022-243 because I have some questions for staff.
The council member Palmer, now I don't have to.
Great. The next item on the agenda are work session items, 2022-229 through 231. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. Our first one is the review of the public hearing items from the planning department. Clint Peters, our director of development service, will be covering that. I believe he has eight of them.
Thank you, Bradley. Mayor, city council, we do have eight public hearings this meeting. The first four are dealing with subdivision plats and variances to some of the plat requirements that we have. The first one is the Lindsey Farms Estates addition, lots 1 through 4, Block 1. This is a four-lot subdivision along the Brazos River in the Bosqueville area of our ETJ. Typically, council would not see a plat of this size, but the property does not have access to public water. So there was a requirement to extend city water to this property. They are asking for a variance to that requirement. The nearest water is a city line that extends out Rock Creek Road. It's outside our city limits, but it's a, a system that the city acquired about 20 years ago that was failing, and the city took it over to provide all those property owners with water out there. The line is about a mile away from these properties, and there are 13 other properties along Lindsey Lane that are currently served by private water wells. So they are asking to serve those lots with private water wells. Here are the four lots, they're all over a range in size from about four and a half to five acres in size. And then here's a closer-up map of the property here and where the water line is here. And you can see all these hatched properties are currently served by private water wells. And they have reached out to the Southern Trinity Groundwater Conservation District, who permits water wells, and have a letter that they can get permitted for three additional wells. There's actually an existing well on the site, so they're just requesting three more wells on that. Staff and plan commission recommended approval of that variance.
Clint, this all is superior. I'm, I'm supportive of the variance. I just have a quick question on, is the city, is there any water quality rep that we have to give? Are we indemnified from, from that separate well, or do we even fall into any kind of a chain of liability on?
So that's a good question. So on our, we do have three conditions on the variance. One, that they add a note that, on the plat, that it's gonna be served by private water wells, and then those are permitted through the Trinity Groundwater District. So that takes out our chain of liability there. And then we also have a, just because, you know, this area is very rural in nature, and, you know, if it starts getting more to density, that requires public water, we have a condition that it says if they ever further subdivide, then they would need to extend the water.
Okay. Thanks, Clint.
So just to clarify on that, just helpful, what would be the trigger for them? It'd be them subdividing their lots would require the variance to expire then, and we would have to renegotiate altogether, is that?
Correct. So if they, if so...
Subdivided one of those.
Yeah, if somebody came in here and wanted to subdivide this four and a half acres into another four lots, let's say, then that would require the requirement to extend the line again, and then, you know, they'd have to extend the line or come back through this process and reevaluate it.
I'm fine with this variance, but just for, help me understand, is there a scenario where if we wanted to, we could say there's other trigger points? Like if the density in that area became, not on this property, but it became more dense in that area, that we would ever want to have a trigger for renegotiation of a variance? Get in the weeds on something that, I was fascinated by our regulation of water and what could change into a more dense area.
I think the way we have it covers us, because if any other of these properties develop, they'll have to go through the plating process and have that same requirement. So there'll be, I guess, a trigger point at any time any of this property subdivides in that area. So as long as there, there's no more further subdivision in that area, we feel like water wells are appropriate out there. I think at some point, let's just say, you know, one of these larger tracts came in that's currently served by one water well, and, you know, wanted to divide it into 20 lots, that's, you know, we'll have to make that call, but there's a, there's a tipping point there where it makes more sense to have a public water source instead of wells there.
Thanks.
Clint, this is in the ETJ, is that correct? It's outside of the city limits but subject to our plating requirements?
Correct. And this is somewhat of a unique situation, because we actually have a city of Waco water line that runs out that area. But it's, it's probably two and a half miles from our city limits, maybe a little bit further. The next plat is the Steinbeck Farm Edition, lots 2 through 4, Block 1. This is a, a existing platted lot at the corner of Old Steinbeck Bend and Steinbeck Bend Road. This is in our city limits along the Brazos River. Originally, this was a large 170-acre one lot that had one house on it and a horse farm on it, I believe. It was recently purchased by two brothers that want to keep it a family farm, but they want to, for financing purposes, subdivide out the two lots, one containing an existing home that one brother will live in, and the other will be where a new home will be built for the other brother. But the remainder of the, the large lot will be co-owned by the two brothers. So it's somewhat of an existing condition. There is an existing driveway that's paved there that they want to maintain as their, as their actus. But because they're plating the lots, our subdivision ordinance says that this road must be upgraded to city standards, which would be curb and gutter, full 28-foot wide street. In this case, where it's just serving two properties that's on a family land, we felt like it was appropriate just to leave it in existing condition as long as there was an easement covering it.
And if they wanted to replat in the future, that would still come back to council to...
That would be the same, very similar thing. So, so basically, they're asking for it just to stay the way it is, and which would allow them to subdivide the two, the two home sites out of the larger family lot. So it did require variance in both planned, staff and plan commission recommend approval of. Our next plat that has a variance request on it is the Chapel Wells Edition. This is a new single-family subdivision out in our Ritchie Road area, off Chapel Road and Ritchie Road. This is actually in between Chapel Road and the new Cowan Village subdivision. The developer plans to extend the road that's in Cowan Village over to Chapel Road into 26 half-acre lots, approximately half-acre lots. We, the, the ordinance does have a block length, a maximum block length requirement of 1,000 feet. And because of the way this property is situated, and there's really not a way to connect to adjacent properties because they're already developed, they are asking for a variance to that 1,000-foot block length, allow a 1,300-foot block length with the subdivision. Staff did recommend approval of that, and plan commission did as well. The next plat is the amended preliminary plat of Sanderson Farms Edition. This is Waco Industrial Foundation land out in the Aviation Industrial Park. This is to accommodate some new industrial development. The Aston Johnson new industrial site is here. They're also plating another lot for another industrial development, and then a lot for a regional detention area for that park out there. And you can see here the hatched area where the new lots that they're creating are. They will need to extend sewer line to serve the new lot here. Plan commission recommended approval, they've met all the comments for that. And then the last two plats, our final plat and construction plans of the Chapel Ridge Edition, Phase 10 and 12, these are just the next phases of a single-family subdivision that's been developing for approximately about the last 10 years, bounded by Panther Way, Ritchie, and Chapel. Phase 10 has eight lots, and then Phase 12 has 65 lots. You can see in there, there'll be access off of Chapel Road and connect back to the existing Chapel Ridge subdivision. And they have met all requirements and plan commission recommended approval of those as well. Our next public hearing is a request for special permit for short-term rental type 1 in R1A zoning district. This is about an acre and a half property in the Landon Branch neighborhood, just off of Park Lake and MacArthur. All single-family zoning around there. Let me see the zoning. So here's the property, the, the owners, just a reminder, the STR1 is where the owners do occupy and live on-site when they are renting out the STR. This is the large lot, and they have a couple of guest quarters on the property that they would like to rent out for short-term rentals. Because it's an STR1, they could rent out the, the two guest quarters, but they would, it can only be to one group at a time, it can't be separate groups. Here's the property looking from 31st Street down the driveway to the backyard, and then this is looking in the backyard with the poolhouse, and then the other guest quarter in the back. So that's the two units they'd want to rent out. We did get quite a bit of opposition on this one. We had one family speak at the plan commission hearing, and then after the plan commission hearing, we did receive a petition, an opposition that triggered the supermajority requirement for approval. So it will take five out of the six council members to approve this one. Plan commission did recommend approval by a five, a vote of 5-2, but the petition triggers the supermajority requirement.
A quick observation on that, the, the petition came in after the plan commission approved it.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And then, I just wanted to verify, Clint, the, the triggering, I know that the presentation from the citizen talked about 50% of the residents, residents within the 200-foot, is that, was that validated by staff or verified?
Yeah, so the, the trigger point for the supermajority is the, if owners of property sign a petition, own more than 20% of the land within the 200 feet, then it triggers. And it, it was close, it was like 35%.
35?
Yeah, 35.
Thanks.
So is it actually by, like, square footage, or is it more by owner, kind of lots around?
Square footage, so, yeah. So, I mean, if, if one owner owned a bunch of the land within the 200 feet, it could, it could be triggered just by one.
One person, okay.
Yeah, one person, yeah.
Thanks so much.
In this case, there was multiple people that signed the petition and some large property owners within that 200 feet.
And we have no distinction between, like, for a short-term rental type 1, there's no distinction if I'm renting out my house and I have a specific room that's available for an STR versus I'm renting out my house and I have a back house or a poolhouse, like in this situation. They all just fall under STR type 1?
Correct. Yeah, it just talks about on the property.
Okay.
The next public hearing is a rezoning, a proposed rezoning from C2, which is a commercial zoning, and R2, which is a residential zoning, to R3C, which is multi-family zoning at property located at 2421 and 2423 Bagby Avenue. This is about almost five acres of land between Bagby and Spate in South Waco. This is the, the old University High baseball facility that's currently being used by a club baseball team called the Storm that is recently under contract... club baseball team called The Storm that is recently under contract to sell. See the land use calls for medium-density residential office flex. And then zoning, the existing zoning, a lot of it, about probably three-quarters of it is currently commercial zoning, C2 zoning, which allows a mix of commercial, retail uses, hotels, restaurants, and multifamily. And then there is a small portion of the property along 24th Street that's R2 zoning. And so they're requesting to change the whole property to R3C, which is a medium-density zoning that allows everything from single-family to 25 units an acre, which is the same density that's allowed in the current C2 zoning.
The, this is pretty closed, well, it is closed. It's right in the middle of housing, all around there, 25th, 24th. Was there any opposition from any of the neighbors for, and I know we say we sent out the mailouts and the information that this development is coming. Was there anyone who spoke against it beside the one that's here in the book?
No, ma'am, that's the only one we received out of 91 notices.
At first I was concerned because it's taking over baseball fields. And, you know, I'm an advocate of baseball. So that's three fields less that we have in South Waco for our youth. I'm kind of concerned about putting in whatever is going to go in there. And I understand and realize it's across the street from the Chauvin Center, and, but it's close to Sacred Heart Church. And they did not send in a proposal?
It did, the notices did not go to the church. They're outside the 200-foot.
I just have a little concern about that. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable, well, that I'm comfortable with that, but I wanted to soak in.
Sure.
I wanted to soak in because I don't want the residents around there to be, their homes are, they're not very big, but that's their homes. And I don't want them disturbed in any kind of way with whatever's going to go in here. And you said there's quite a bit that's going to go in there?
Well, so...
The zoning...
The existing zoning allows commercial uses. The proposed zoning does not, so it's somewhat considered a downzoning because it's getting rid of all the potential commercial uses that could be currently developed there because it's currently...
So I misunderstood you then.
Right, so it's going from commercial zoning to multifamily residential zoning.
Clint, is the property sold?
My understanding it's under contract to be sold. The club team that currently practices their, my understanding their lease is either up or coming up, and they've already started the process of finding other fields to practice at. This wasn't a surprise to them that the property was going to be sold and that their lease was not going to be renewed by the new owners. But the zoning, the current zoning right now, and that's why we, the staff was supportive of it, is potentially could allow some uses that, in our opinion, would be less compatible than what's being proposed with the new zoning.
So currently, Clint, the property that's subject here is zoned both C2 and R2, and under C2, they could have multifamily.
Correct.
Under R2, they could not.
Correct.
Is that right?
Right.
And, but under C2, they could have a broad number of uses for that, or there's a number of different types of zoning that could go there.
Correct.
And so under R3C, what they're proposing, it's a little more limiting to multifamily. Is that...
Well, it limits it to residential uses.
Residential use, okay.
Where the current zoning would be, could be a mix of either multifamily or commercial uses, similar to what you, you know, you see along where the University High developed, restaurants, hotels, retail.
It just concerned me because we lost some fields for our youth. And that's me, I mean, you know, I, but the man owns a property, but we just, it just concerned me that we lost some baseball fields for our youth in South Waco to use. That's...
I'll echo Alice a little bit there that, yeah, I hate to see small neighborhood ballparks, you know, because like when growing up there, you could play a game every three blocks or so, you'd have someplace to play. But this one, and I want to follow Josh, or Council, Mayor Pro Tem, borders, line of logic.
All of it.
That, see, it's privately owned, so the guy could tear down the ball field and build something else that's in C2 zoning if he wanted to. So that part, that part kind of pulls me across to say, we need, the housing stock is low, and this is a quality housing stock right there, probably would be a good idea. And I'm also looking at the map over here on other ball fields in the neighborhood, and there's, yeah, it's, you know, Cotton, the Rampage Field's quite a ways away from there, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Rampage is way down at the other.
But I think we'll see the new field going in over, I think that Jonathan, we're going to have a presentation on, is not too far away from there, the Challenger Fields, and there's a couple others.
I'm not too sure about that one. But anyway, is there going to be a buffer to protect the homeowners that are around that area? That's a concern of mine. And I understand about the creek, but there's slew of homes right across the creek where this, so I want to protect their privacy as well and make sure that they're protected from all the development that's going to be going on over there. So do we have any protection in writing in contract that is going to protect the neighborhood or are we just going to let them do whatever?
So the zoning ordinance has development requirements when you're abutting, single-family, that the setbacks get larger and you have to have some buffering, either fencing or landscaping between those. In this case, you do have the channel there that separates the property, but you would also have the setback requirements as well there.
I want to make sure our residents are protected.
Sure.
And I know on the side here where it stops, there's also homes there.
There is, there is a mix of uses that, you know, some of this, there's a commercial use at the corner of Spate and 24th, but there are some built-in development requirements regardless of the zoning that help, you know, buffer, buffer more intense development from lower-density development.
Thank you.
Sure. Plan commission did recommend approval of that one. The next zoning request is about 11 and a half acres down on University Parks and Garden to rezone from O3 to O2. University Parks, especially this section of University Parks, has a lot of student housing development in it, and the proposed zoning would allow for a mix of office and multifamily development. The current O3 zoning is more of a commercial office and then a limited residential, but doesn't allow the multifamily.
I went by there this morning to, just to make sure that it wasn't going to be intrusive to the neighborhood, but it's pretty wide open and there's a lot of development of apartments on that area, in that area anyway, so I calmed down about that.
Yes, and we have, we, the, on rezoning requests, we have not recommended any additional multifamily zoning probably about the last 10 years on the numbered streets when you do get back into where the residence is. But along University Parks, it pretty much is, that's the pattern of development along there. You can see in this picture when you're looking from this property back towards campus, all the apartments. So staff and plan commission recommended approval of that request, and then there was no opposition from the cards. And then the last one is right down the street going towards Loop 340 at 4200 South University Parks Drive. This one's a little unique. This was a, there's an existing commercial building on this property. This area was annexed back in 1998, and the commercial use on the property was considered legal non-conforming and can continue to operate with the residential zoning that was designated back in 1998 until it ceased operation. The building has been vacant for some, quite some time, but the current owner is wanting to renovate it and turn it back into a commercial use, and so therefore is requesting commercial zoning. Here's a little bit closer look at it. The owner does own the property all the way back to, I believe that's South Third Street.
Yep.
But the request would just be along the portion that fronts University Parks. Again, there are some homes along South Third Street, so we felt like it was appropriate to keep that residentially zoned.
This is the one I'm not calm about. Now, because he just applied for the first half of his property, later on, he can come back and say, hey, I want to extend my zoning to South Third Street, which would be right in the middle of those homes back there. And it's close to, and right next door to, I think, there's a childcare facility there.
Correct, there's a daycare that's owned C2 as well that's adjacent to it.
Yeah, that...
Do we know, and I don't want to interrupt you, Councilmember, but do we know what the developer is looking to, what business or industry?
My understanding is some sort of retail. We didn't get specifically, again, we had, you know, look at all the uses, but my understanding, it was originally a convenience store, and so my understanding is he wanted to renovate it for some sort of retail use.
So correct me, has it been functioning as a convenience store allowable because of non-conforming use?
It cannot anymore. Once the property has been out of use for more than two years.
Got it, got it, got it.
And they have to abide by the existing zoning, which is residential.
Which is residential, so that's the reason we're getting this now.
That's right, yeah.
But that convenience store has been closed for quite some time.
It has, yeah.
But the childcare center has not been.
Correct.
That concerns me, putting retail next to childcare.
Was the childcare center also in, I assume it was an involuntary annexation in 1998?
Correct.
Was it also involuntarily annexed but made C2 or did an application for C2 come at some point since then?
Yeah, so all this area that was annexed in 98 was brought in as single-family zoning, and there's been rezonings over the years, over the last 24 years, the different, where you can see the commercial zoning. So the, I don't know how long the daycare has been there, it had been other commercial uses in the past, but it was rezoned at some point since it was annexed as well. I will say the, because it's, if this, if the zoning gets changed, there are restrictions on alcohol sales being close to daycare, so they would not be able to sell alcohol in off-premise sale or on-premise unless there are some exemptions to that if it's a restaurant. But other than that, they would not be able to have alcohol, so.
Clint, is that the daycare center just right on the other side of that? Yeah.
So, yeah, so the, yeah, that's probably the best picture. So there's a, this is the daycare center right here.
Okay.
Well, we, this one concerns me in several ways. We want to make sure that we protect our homeowners on South Third Street. Again, I'm going to ask what I previously asked on the other one. Is there buffers, something to protect the homeowners on South Third Street from whatever retail activity this developer is going to bring in?
It has the same buffer requirements. I will say, when they originally came in, they were requesting that the whole property be rezoned to C2, and we told them that staff would not support the back half because of the house is on South Third Street.
Thank you for that.
So the property owner that owns this property actually owns the property right behind it. It's all the same property, and so that would have to develop a single-family residential. And then there are those same buffer requirements we talked about with the previous case that the set, like, if a new development would require larger setbacks and fencing and landscaping buffers between any residential properties.
Would that be, if this were to be granted, would that be in writing so that way, like, that...
It's in the ordinance.
So we, so on rezonings, we can't put conditions on rezonings, but those are just development requirements of any commercial development that happens in commercial zoning adjacent to residential zoning.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure our homeowners are protected and our childcare facility is protected as well. And I appreciate you telling me you couldn't go all the way to the back to South Third Street because that would really be intrusive for retail to be put in between residential area. I'm not going to support this, this public hearing. I'm going to vote against it.
Plan commission did recommend approval of the request. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Clint.
All right, Mayor and Council, our next work session is a discussion of site development requests and implementation and plan for affordable and mixed-income housing development, be led by Galen Price, our Director of Community Services. I'm excited for you to hear about the process that he's crafted in a preliminary manner and also excited to hear about how we're going to use this process and, as well as additional variety of assets in our CDBG and home funding, as well as our city-owned properties to really drive at the need for additional housing in the core of Waco. I know that's important as counsel because you prioritize your American Rescue Plan dollars significantly towards that, and we spend a lot of time talking about housing. So, Galen, appreciate your work here and look forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Bradley. New mayor and council. During this presentation, we will be discussing what site development is, the goals of the assistance, and the funding available. We'll also talk about the proposed new process and implementation of said process and answer any questions that you may have. What is site development? Site development is the construction of infrastructure, which includes water and sewer improvements, streets, curbs and gutters to support new and/or existing construction. Site development is a key element when you begin to discuss affordability and the cost of construction. Affordability is defined as a household not spending over 30% of their gross monthly income on housing expenses. Typically, housing costs and site development costs are factored into the cost of the house, which can affect the price and subsequently affect affordability of the house. Staff began to see a need arise from requests submitted by developers for additional funding outside of housing construction. In September of 2020, council amended our current five-year consolidated plan to include the ability to support the development of affordable housing via infrastructure improvements. The plan also modified to allow for the acquisition and rehab of units to create additional affordable housing opportunities. Currently, we have approximately $1.3 million available in federal entitlement funding in support of these goals in the action plan. And so to help support the requests of site development and future housing projects, we are proposing the following plan. Developers would submit an online application through our current application portal. This is a portal that we use currently for our sub recipients and our public service activities, as well as our small business grants to apply for funding via this portal. Included in the application for site development would be, they would have to provide us with a site plan, renderings, a budget, and proof of engagement of the neighborhood. You know, the neighborhood would like to know and have a, and deserve to know exactly what is being proposed in their community. So we're asking them, similar to what we ask of our tax credit applications, to have discussions with the neighborhood prior to submitting the application.
Galen, may I ask you a question? What on the renderings bullet point, is there a, any guidelines or rubric that will be included in the application template for them to best understand the staff or council or both's goals kind of on a lot-by-lot basis? And if I'm getting ahead of you, pushing back.
No, that, that's a great question, Mayor. What we would do is, you know, the renderings, they're in a existing neighborhood, for example. They need to conform to the existing neighborhood. So as they're, they're submitting their applications, we'll have discussions with them depending on where they're proposing to do their development.
Correct.
So the renderings would be, again, to make sure they're in conformity with the neighborhood.
I just want to make sure that applicants are set up for success and that they understand if they propose a multifamily where you and your staff's judgment or this council has kind of projected an idea for higher density, but separated, single-family as an example, then I just want to make sure that they know that as soon as possible and kind of move down that path. And I think that also goes for me, and I don't know where this, this might be more budget than renderings, because renderings can be hard, but also the quality of materials as a, as a part of it too. So to me, I'm just thinking through setting up the developers for success to make sure that when they submit a proposal, there's a clarity on what our expectations are going to be as they're spending money preparing this proposal.
Yes, sir. And as, in a couple of slides, we'll talk about the timeline, and there's a part where there's a staff review process that kind of gives us that, that flexibility to have those conversations.
To support your statement, Mayor, and, and just to add some more definitive clarity in language, you know, we're not willing to pay for substandard you know, material. And it made the changes that we did with building and standards and all the things because, you know, we expect greatness for our Waycoans. And, you know, so I think it should be made clear, and, and I'm sure it will be in the application form and process, whether need to, Monica, whether we need to create a YouTube video or something, this is what we expect. You set, you know, you set the level of expectations for everybody. So, you know, no one's surprised or disappointed. But at the end of the day, the residents get exactly what they wanted, which is outstanding housing at an affordable rate.
This is a really specific suggestion, but going off of that, I wonder if we need to create a packet that can be available on the website, and it shows this, like, this is what a sample-filled-out packet looks like. That's an A+. And then people can adjust accordingly.
I agree with the, both the mayor and council members, both of them. We want affordable housing that's going to stand up. When they move into the housing area and in the house, they'll know that they don't have problems right away. So we want the best we can afford to give them. We don't want to put up something that does not look good and they're not comfortable in a house, but they have no other choice but to go in the house.
Right.
So we want to make sure, I, I know the council would want to make sure that we give them the best that we can so that they can be in a home that they're proud of, whether it's rental or buying. Because if it's in a nice home, they're going to make it to stay in a nice home. They're going to take care of it. So. My two cents.
Thank you. And so with the, the implementation plan, what we're proposing to do is create a committee that would receive submissions year-round, but will meet quarterly to review those requests that have been received. This committee will review and make recommendations for funding, which would ultimately be brought to the council for approval. Those who do receive funding will be followed up with to review the progress on their project. Staff is promoting, proposing the committee be composed of representatives of the three chambers, city department staff, and one resident.
The homes of the, Galen, I was looking at this, and maybe you thought through it, I'm sure you did much more than I did, but would it make sense to have a builder on there just to, or a developer, just to have that voice or, I don't know, but that, that one seemed to be?
I couldn't hear. What's that?
Have a developer or builder on that committee, just to get the feedback of the developer community?
Yes, it would. And that's one of the things we would look for in a resident.
Okay.
Resident component, the resident piece is that someone with, that has or is familiar with development.
Great. Thanks.
I wanted to ask. On where you say create brochures, I'm sure you're going to put them in Spanish as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And put them in areas where, like, community centers and places where a lot of our residents go to, to, so that they'll know and have a choice of whether they want to participate or not, and make sure that they know what's out there for them.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. All of, as, as you were stating earlier, and the councils, as far as marketing with the examples, all of that is part of our proposed marketing plan in regards to this process. Just to make the public aware of the process, you know, we plan to advertise via the local newspaper, our city website, and the development of brochures in addition to our social media outlets. We also plan to work with our chambers and the Builders Association to make developers aware of this program. You know, staff looks at this as a necessary perspective to, to help address the housing supply issue that was identified in our strategic housing plan. If council is in agreement with the proposed process, we would like to begin this process May 16th to allow for us time to advertise the program prior to making the applications available. As applicants are accepted throughout the year, the process would be ongoing. But the timeline typically will run between 60 and 90 days from an application submitted to the time a recommendation is made to our council. And with that, I'll answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions?
I've got some questions. Galen, thanks for this presentation. Number of things. So my first question is, I've been in probably 20-some meetings about housing as a, as a result of that housing study, and something that I hear being brought up from time to time is the question of, do we need to recruit outside affordable, affordable housing developers from our community to come into Waco that already have some of this skill set that increase capacity locally? Is that part of the equation that you and your team are considering?
It is part of the equation that we are considering, as well as working with our local developers who may have an interest in, in developing, the development of affordable housing. But I think with the, as we've seen with the housing study, the, the great amount of need that we have.
Yeah.
It's going to take a substantial number of developers to help us meet our goals.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of like cities like where the cost of living has just gone through the roof, like in Nashville, that is, you know, years ahead of us in this process that might have some folks that we can learn from. And then maybe they're using local subs, so that way we're still circulating money in our local economy, but not having to build from ground zero. Another question I have is, as all of us up here, we've acquired a lot of land recently. And I'm curious how, if this process is for city-owned lots, like the several lots that we purchased on North 15th Street in North Waco, or if this is for lot development that is being owned in the private sector?
It is for lots, lots that we own as well.
Okay.
That, that we own as well as lots in the private sector.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll be having a discussion around our vacant property here fairly soon.
Okay. And my follow-up with that is, because we have a lot of land in our pocket right now, if you will, I'm curious what the process looks like for deciding which sites we are going to move forward on. Some of the conversations we've all had is, is it more strategic for us to go block by block and choose, you know, a portion of a neighborhood in District One that we're going to focus on? Or do we do kind of redevelopment throughout the city, or do we focus on one district for a year at a time? Will, will some of these decisions of what sites we're working on, is that going to be a recommendation coming from this group, coming from the housing team, brought forth from council?
What we, what, what you will see is that we'll have a recommendation brought forth from staff with housing staff working with our planning and real property
Okay.
staff. And as we put together our recommendations, those will be brought forth to council, council for approval based on, you know, if, if council is in agreement, or if they would like us to tweak some of the, what we're proposing from a property standpoint.
Okay.
All of that will be, be brought forth to council for council to review and make that determination.
Galen, what was your expectation on timeline around when that work would come forth?
That work, we're planning to have that work come forth around mid-June.
Okay.
To, to begin starting that recommendation process for what lots would be made available.
And then one last question, sorry. I just have so many, so much care and about housing, investment in housing. I'm curious with the funding, is this a, within our CDBG allocation, is this old money that was previously being set aside for something else, or is this, has this already, has this historically already been allocated for site development?
A portion has been historically set aside for site development.
Okay.
And a portion would be reallocated in support of site development.
And that's being reallocated from?
Contracts that had expired where sub recipients had not, I'm sorry, nonprofits that we work with
Okay.
completed their contract and had additional money
Okay.
left over.
And then where, where it says housing rehab under the Home Investment Partnership, is this, like, let's say we buy a rundown multifamily unit, is that rehabbing for something that already exists, or is this, are, are these the rehab dollars that we have for individual homeowners to repair a roof, or?
No, this is separate and apart from what this would be, would be us if we found a dilapidated property. We would go out, buy it, and additional to that, put rehab dollars into it, and then make it available for a first-time home buyer
Okay.
to, to purchase that property.
Thank you for answering all of my questions.
Galen, so to follow up with Councilmember Palmer, so these dollars, those are reallocation dollars, so those aren't any of the like cares or, or dollars?
No, ma'am, this is.
That's whole, that's separate and apart?
This is, yes.
Very good. The second question is, where do the, the CHODOs are eligible for these dollars? Where do they fit into this? Because is this not, I know some of those funds were like for monies that were left over from their projects and things, but where do they fall in this process?
The CHODOs would have the ability to, to apply through this process. So we, we have, they could apply for site development funds through this process, and then, of course, we have our annual action plan process that HUD requires us to set aside 15% for CHODOs.
Mm-hmm.
So essentially, they would have the ability to apply for, through our annual action plan process, in addition to this process.
However, they're held to the same standards as everyone else.
That is correct.
And so the requirements, design, all of those things that we require from private developers would be.
Would be, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you.
Do we think this is enough money? I mean, thinking about.
I know, I asked, I was like, so what does that cost?
How far, how far is this going to go?
Well, we do have, if you recall, part of, of dollars that were set aside in our American Rescue Plan Act was for the development of, it was housing construction in addition to rehabilitation. So as subsequent subcategories of those, if you will, there is a potential for those dollars to be set aside and actually put in support of this project, process as well. Because ultimately, it's the creation of new construction or rehabbing of existing.
And I'm assuming there'll be opportu, will there be opportunities for other funding as a project comes forth, where maybe they need something other that, like, they're looking for a 380 agreement or something like that? Is there going to be other funding needs that we'll need to utilize from some of these other funding buckets in housing for some of the developments that get proposed?
Yes, sir. It, it, depending on a development, yes. Depending on a development, you know, there may be a need to combine several sources to, to, to get to the end goal.
One, one of the tensions I'm feeling is, you know, the, I have really high standards for development and want there to be housing that is built to last and going to stand the test of time. But the higher our requirements for good housing, and then the less we want to charge some of the residents buying the houses, the greater the delta for the developer who, even, no matter who it is, community-minded developers still need to cover their costs. And so I just think that as we evaluate this, that, in my head, I, I'm looking forward to understanding this process more because I imagine there will be a need, as someone applies for this program, there's still going to be housing buck-like dollars utilized to complete the development to the standards with what we have, which is for good-quality housing, but it's also affordable.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and even in, in, you know, as much as we want to support the advancement of development and things, our responsibility is not to, to make certain their bottom line. I think that we, we have a responsibility, and we, you know, everybody's got to cover their costs because we can't do it if we don't, and there won't be any advancement. But your, the margin, your profit margin is not where my, my priorities lie. I think that we have a responsibility to see to it that, that, that the housing that we want to see gets built. And if we do it right, everybody can walk away happy. Or at least relatively pleased.
I agree. I want that. I also don't want vacant land to sit fertile for a decade because the requirements and the costs don't align. And so that's where we come in with some of these buckets to, like, incentivize it and get it off the ground.
But I think with, with us having, you know, the, the federal money now, I mean, at least, this is an opportunity in a period that we had never had before. So I think this is the, the best time to do this in the right way that will be most effective for everybody. You said June, though?
Mid-June.
Mid-June for regarding our vacant, vacant property.
Did Memorial Day, Memorial Day sound better? I mean, I'm just saying.
I think I already pressed him a little bit on that.
Come on, man. Yeah, okay, awesome.
The, one of the things to build on Councilmember Bearfield's point of all the buckets that we have, I think this is why I like the approach that Galen's outlined. With all the resources, state, local, federal, it's a great time to go out into the world and say, what can you do, whether it's on our properties or private properties, to leverage the opportunity that's in front of us. Because as y'all are very well aware, what our gap is, 5,000 or 6,000 affordable units. And the, the dollars we have, we need to make sure they go as far as possible
Yeah.
to achieve as many units possible. And going out to the market in this way, I think, shows you know, the most viable solution to get the most units possible. So appreciate, Galen, you and your team putting together this approach.
Yeah.
I, I have just a comment. I'm real excited about the Floyd Casey development. It's the first time for District Two. We never have had any lots that available for folks to come in and do something with them. So for me, this is real exciting. And what we just. And what we just said, we want some nice houses up there, affordable housing. That is a big need in District Two, I know in everybody's district it is as well. But District Two has never had something like this to come forward. So I'm excited about this. But I also want it to be exciting for the residents that are going to try and buy affordable housing. And we make sure that they get the best that they have, that we can give them with the money that we have. And I know the developers that'll come on board, you will be telling them, the council wants this. So thank you for that, thank you for this report.
I missed this, and I apologize. So how does, people are submitting proposals for privately-owned property? And what is our role in that exactly? I'm sorry, I'm not, like, in my head, this was for city-owned land. But how does it flow for private-owned property, this process? I'm sorry, I'm- Galen, why don't you walk through, I know you've had one or two people kind of test the waters here. Why don't you walk them through what one of those developers was kind of talking to you about in unit counts and things like that?
Right, okay. So we had, we had discussions with a developer who was interested in building a development in South Waco, actually. It was comprised of 21 lots. And so they were requesting money for site development in support of their project. And so as staff, we looked at the project, and the determination was, we looked at it and, and looking at CDBG funding as a potential assistance with the site development. And the reason why we were recommending CDBG is because under the federal guidelines, you know, 51% has to be low to moderate income. So with that development, 11 of the 21 units would have to be affordable. But that leaves the other 10 units as market rate units. So we're able to achieve the goals of having a mixed-income development.
Got it. Through providing that assistance on private development.
Through providing that assistance.
I don't know why I was having trouble checking with that. That makes sense. I think to Councilmember Palmer's point, I think just monitoring the funding amount is going to be important. I'm very in favor of being strategic about how we use this. But I think what's going to be helpful to me, and I think it's probably, hopefully coming to Housing Summit or soon, is I know that there's a lot of strategies with a lot of dollars amount behind it for a lot of our housing goals. And so whether that be, you know, that Housing Trust Fund and the plan for that, or rehabilitation strategies in the plan for that, whatever, there's a lot at play, I think, in this kind of new housing strategy that we're deploying. And so visually, I think it's going to be helpful for us and the community to kind of see how these all fit together and the funding models behind that. But this is really exciting to me. I think that, a question I have for the evaluation of, this is more of a broad housing question, not necessarily for site development. But I think one of the questions that I would just like leave out there for a future discussion on housing that I'm wrestling with is, how do we decide where certain types of housing goes? Like, again, that, is this a spot for single-family? Is this a spot for multifamily? Is this a spot for homeownership, multifamily, or renter, single-family? And then what is, are there different levels of affordability that we're targeting in terms of, okay, this one, we want to have, like, this is the price point, like, we're building up, this is mixed income certainly, but it's not necessarily low income in this spot, but we're going to have a targeted strategy for low income. So how do we factor that in? And that's kind of the conversation that I'm like wanting to process through, like, how do we determine? Because I think that, you know, there's, in my mind, there's a time and a place for all of it. And just want to be strategic about how and where we deploy those strategies. And I just think that's kind of a future conversation to continue to have as we explore this.
I think that's right, Mayor. You know, we had, what, last year, or? When I first came on, we had a lot of folks come up there and, because we said low income, they didn't want it, you know? So we need to be sure and make people aware, educate them what we mean by low income. There were, I don't know if you remember the protest of some folks that were here that didn't want low-income housing in their neighborhood. So we need to make sure we differentiate in the way we use low income and affordable housing. I think affordable housing is more comfortable. So that's just my, you know, my opinion on the word low income. And I know we have to use it at times because we do have low-income folks, you know, for whatever reason. But we need to be more looking out for what we're using the word to keep people from coming up here and saying, we do not want low-housing development in our neighborhood.
Mayor, can I follow up to your question?
No.
I'm curious, maybe, Galen or Bradley, because in the housing study, there was some of those recommendations. It had like, this is a type A, and we recommend type A at Old Hillcrest, or type B at Floyd Casey. I'm wondering, is that something that we can expect discussion on in the housing study? Is that something we need to call for a future work session on? Because I absolutely share that. I think us mapping out and starting to kind of long-term brainstorm where we want across the city would be a helpful component.
Thing gives me peace because I'm like, okay, if someone comes forward and they're like, this is going to be, there's an affordability component to this, but it's not low income. But we know there's a low-income strategy that's happening and being deployed over here. They're like, great, like, this is, there's an affordability component, we're moving forward with this. But we know that this is in the queue.
Yeah.
And I think that that is where future discussions, I think, will be helpful.
And how, regardless of the area of town, the market drives itself. I mean, but with us making intentional plans, I mean, I think, you know, creating opportunity to live in mixed-income communities is more like the world that we live in. And so, you know, we'll, I think the part of this plan and with the housing study itself, those are all the things that speak to that specifically. You know, we have the opportunity to create some neighborhoods that will do all of that, you know, coming up forthright, you know? But I think that we need to be intentional to, that there will, there are some spaces, you know, that call for special, specific, specific, word, word block? Considerations and modifications to them. But there are also, it is still space that as a growing, developing community, we have to, we have to think about the growth for all. So there has to be place for everybody. And, you know, but I think some, you know, to our credit, we do this with intentionality of raising up the people who, the least of these, but also bearing the consideration that we need to push where market is available.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Not light work.
It's really heavy, and it's hard, and I think that it is those factors. And I think another thing that's weighing in the back of my mind, that is just in addition to all of those things, it's not separate, but in addition to those things, is the need for our tax base to be secured through, like, good housing stock. It's, there's a humanity component to this. We want families to live in good housing stock. But I'm also looking at it from a tax revenue perspective and realizing that having, in the long play, in the long run, having poor housing stock is not good for a city's budget for multiple reasons. So there's a return on investment to our strategizing how to deploy these funds for positive, forward-moving housing in our community.
So can we, could we answer, though, that question of like, will this be a future work session? Will that be in the housing study that we're discussing?
To answer that question, actually, I'm going to give a sneak preview.
Oh, come on.
Of the meeting that's scheduled for next Tuesday, the 26th. We'll be having discussions kind of centered around some of those topics. And part of the goal is to have task force come out of that meeting that are focused on specific areas for concentration, so.
Can't wait.
Any other questions, Thomas?
I'll just say, Galen, I appreciate your leadership and really galvanizing all of our thoughts. And as we move forward here with coming up with solutions, I appreciate you organizing all of this because it's something that we've been talking about on council for several years. And now I think we have a concentrated effort, and you are the new housing czar of Waco. So help us, help us come up with a solution. Because I, and I'll echo what the mayor said about putting funds, funding the gap between just a minimally-built home and something with some neighborhood appeal, long-term value durability, because you build generational wealth in homeownership. And I just think that's what we need to be moving toward. And that generational value manifests itself in a more stable tax base. So I think you have a lot of good momentum behind what we're doing here, and I appreciate your leadership.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, I mean, it's, it's great to have the support of the council as well as the manager's office and, you know, Ray Nisha and the rest of our team putting this all together. Definitely makes it exciting, and we're looking forward to bringing back some suggestions in the future.
Awesome. Thanks, Galen.
Thanks, Galen.
Our next work session, Mayor and Council, is a discussion and update on the Floyd Casey redevelopment project in the nearby Parkland. We'll be joined at the table by Kent George, our Director of Economic Development, as well as Sarah Roberts, Development Representative from Turner Behringer. And then we're joined, I believe via Zoom, by Jonathan Cook, or will be shortly, by Jonathan Cook, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Today, we're going to hear an update on the Floyd Casey project, and specifically hearing about how the project's advancing. I know many in the community are curious about what's been going on since we selected Turner Behringer as our developer. So I'm excited for this team to show where we're at in the development process in creating what'll hopefully turn out to be a more than $100 million mixed-use neighborhood. One of the things I'm most excited about that you're going to see here in a few minutes is how the intentionality behind the development, but also how the location can really tie together downtown and the river with South Waco, using the connectivity of hike-and-bike trails and outdoor spaces. I think it has a real potential to be something regionally significant. So with that, I'm going to let Kent George give us a history lesson, it looks like, from the old Baylor Stadium there, or Floyd Casey Stadium, and take it away, Kent.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today, together with Sarah Roberts, representing Turner Behringer Group, and our, as Bradley mentioned, our Parks Director, Jonathan Cook, I and we have the pleasure of providing an update on the redevelopment of the Floyd Casey site. It's a little bit of history, I've got someone very special to me, and hopefully to you all as well on the screen, Representative Eric. Give you an opportunity to take the trivia challenge and tell me who that is. But as we look back at the history and the journey of this project, in 2016, as you may recall, we acquired the property from Baylor University. It came into the city hands, and on August 1st, 2019, we issued an RFP, a request for proposal for the redevelopment of the site. We had four proposals, they were very good. We scored them and selected the best of the bunch, our local group here, Turner Behringer. That was on March 17, 2020. Along with that, we executed by MOU, a memorandum of understanding, which is fancy language for, we set some preliminary parameters, some preliminary agreement by Resolution City Council on June 1st, 2021. That expires at the end of this year, December 31st, 2021. The group, Turner Behringer Group, has submitted an extension. So the city manager was able to extend that for them for an additional 180 days. Currently, and lastly, we are in the final stages of negotiating the MDA, so the Master Development Agreement. Now, this is more fancy language for what this will actually be. So the structure, the agreement, everything ironed out, exhibits that show you what we're going to get. So we'll be able to have a roadmap to the development of this, of this site and this project. That's why we're here today, is we want to show you our progress. Extremely proud of the journey and how we've worked together to try to deliver to Waco on this very special piece of property that connects so many areas of our city. We're just here today to show you where we're at, get your feedback, get your thoughts, so we can close out our contract and move forward into exciting construction. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah, because she'll dive, and, hold on, before we do that, for those that may not know, that's Michael Singletary, Hall of Fame. Who knew, who?
I knew.
Number 63 for Better Bears, number 50 for the Chicago Bears. He loved being a bear. But I also want to give a special shout out to Cody Carlson and RG3.
That's awesome. Well, Mayor and Council, it's great to be with you. And I wasn't going to intro this way, but I couldn't help but kind of smiling as I was listening to a conversation all around really innovative ways to tackle housing. You know, my background in work in the city has really been more jobs-related. But I think something that has made me so excited about this project is that we all know that places make people come to a community, and people are what attract companies to jobs. And so I think it's all related and so important to the growth of our community. So Kent did a great job walking through the history. Something memorable about the day we were selected is it was also the day the city did the shutdown order. So it was a very active council meeting. And we've been thankful to work together through very difficult economic times to come up with a plan that we're still very passionate about. And what we said to you guys that day is still true. You know, we, our goal is to build a generational neighborhood. It's to build a community that's mixed income, that's mixed density, and that really, you know, brings new models of urban development to the heart of our city that we all love. So one of the things that was really interesting, that big block that says Future City Park, when the city approached us about the need to pull that 40 acres out of the development, we were excited about the opportunity for a regional park next door. I mean, what a great asset and investment in our community. But it was also challenging for the development because it was by far and away the most dense portion of our neighborhood plan. So it sent us back to the drawing board, and very thankfully, we have excellent design folks with McCann Adams Studios. You know, Councilmember Palmer suggested pulling from expertise in cities that have gone before us, and they are truly skilled in something that hasn't really happened in Waco, which is doing land planning from large-scale redevelopments, but that integrate not with cornfields around them, with existing neighborhoods, and really doing that in a way that hopefully draws the existing residents to enjoy all of the investment and amenities that you're putting in next door to them. And so we took the challenge back to our team at McCann Adams, and we said, "Well, we lost like 70% of our high-density land, what are we going to do to figure this out?" And honestly, what we came up with, we're really excited about because we think it's a better project than it even was when we brought it to you, and we were already excited about it then. So what you will see is, and we can give a hard copy to Mr. George that you can get to you guys so you can see it in a bigger scale, and it's a little bit easier to read. But all the different colors represent the different types of housing, the different densities, the different incomes of the neighborhood. And what you'll notice more in this, and we probably should have done a side-by-side, which we certainly can do at some point, but you'll notice that the colors aren't all separated. In the original plan, it was, like, the heart of the neighborhood was a lot more yellow and green, and didn't have as many different housing sizes and stocks. And part of what we did was really work with them to bring a lot more of the different housing types to be gathered together, which is really more of a traditional neighborhood concept, anyway. And it's very different than what you see out in the suburbs where you drive past the small, and then, you know, the medium, and then the large, and the way back. And those neighborhoods are beautiful. We want to encourage some of that type of housing to come into the heart of the city. But we want to do it in a different way. And so one of the things we're really excited about is the 240 lots. So the original plan was 300 lots on 100 acres, and we were able to get 240 lots on roughly like 65 acres. So we're really excited that we were able to keep that. But what you can't see, and we can, I mean, we can have this email to y'all after, but that brownstone that count- but that brownstones that, that count, if you look at the count, no one type of home dominates this development. So roughly half, like two, less than half of the 240, like 215, I want to say, are the urban residential, which is sort of the, if you want to think about urban residential, it's basically what you would have built out in any of your master plan communities, but on an 8,000 square foot lot. So it's a little bit smaller, but bringing it into the heart, smaller yard.
Sure.
Same house, bringing it into the heart of the city. The landmark and heritage are larger lots. I think we right now only have 15 of those total in the whole development. Those would be kind of like your prototypical, classic, traditional neighborhood home that you can see in some of our beautiful old neighborhoods. And then the cottages, zero-lot line, and brownstones, those are all newer concepts. We do not have a lot of this in Waco. These are all products that we're excited about because they bring in some options for affordability, because they put a different footprint and a quality neighborhood. And so this has been super successful in some of the developments that our architects have worked on. And the site plan you're looking at here doesn't show the pocket parks because it's the, it shows the buildings. We can send you one that integrates it. And it shows that a lot of those zero-lot and cottages are also kind of gathered around shared open spaces so that there is still a sense of activity and integrating, you know, people into the neighborhood. It's not like tiny little places where you then don't have a backyard. You don't have a backyard because you have a shared community gathering space. And now hopefully what we'll hear from Mr. Cook is also a really cool regional park next door. And, you know, part of our goal from the very beginning of this has been connectivity and really drawing people out of their homes to use. I mean, Waco Creek is one of the most beautiful natural areas. So the, the whole development is proposed to have trail systems that connect the perimeter. So a lot of the surrounding neighborhoods can come into these trails. Down 29th, basically one block off of Dutton, so it's not quite as traffic-y. But on this street where Flint basically is parallel, that, that internal street would have a trail system and then wrapping around up Williams Landing up to the Future City Park. And we're really excited about the way the trails have been very thoughtfully designed. The open spaces have been designed so that they're a nice visual, attractive way for, you know, Flint, Ross, Cleveland, all of those streets will tee into an open space that really gives a sense of like, welcome and, you know, come activate these trails, you know? So we're really excited about that. You know, I think we all know basic development philosophies that you need people to drive commercial. We do have commercial. We have more commercial opportunities than we originally did because when the city parkland became park again, we had, we freed up seven acres that had previously been dedicated for open space along the creek for some additional commercial development. So it gave us some opportunities to, to look at possibly incorporating more of that creek frontage along Valley Mills into retail. That 13-ish acres of retail, we have three or four pad sites for multifamily. Depends on how you split them up along Dutton, which does have some opportunity for mixed use if the market can support it. And we're excited about that kind of being a nice transition. Dutton's obviously a high-traffic corridor. So for single-family use, we think that's a good way to buffer into the neighborhood, but still be, you know, an, an opportunity for different affordability options. You'll see coming into the main old entrance, a flanking area of brownstones, which we've looked at concepts for both either homeownership or rental with those, those options. So we're really excited about the concept plan itself. And based on the, based on what we're looking at today, our goal is to build this in a single phase. We, we are confident that it will help absorption to not be continually disrupting these new housing stocks. So we are, we're, we're committed to doing a single phase of delivering these lots. And our goal would be like by the fourth quarter of 2023, assuming we close out the negotiations that we're working on right now. That's all dependent on when the property closes, but that, that's our current goal. And then.
So you're currently going to break ground for houses in the quarter, fourth quarter of 2023, or start?
To deliver, yeah, to deliver the lots in the first quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah. So and then, you know, six to nine months of houses, house construction. We estimate roughly five years to be, to total build of houses. And we estimated commercial absorption usually would come about 24 months after the first residents are onsite. You know, we have had some preliminary commercial conversations that could move faster, but typically you get the housing up and then you develop the commercial. So we've, we are working on, and the goal for this is to do a design standards with an overlay instead of a PUD. And we've had some conversations with Clint and our design firm to, to work on that strategy. We think that's going to be a strategy that will be a good template for other areas, possibly in the, in the city, since we are looking at denser housing stocks than some of the traditional zoning allows. And at total build, we're, we're estimating that the neighborhood is, is, city manager Ford's shared, would be roughly a hundred million dollar in value in the heart of the city. But what we're most excited about is we really think that this is a great example of showing how to create that mixed density and mixed income atmosphere. Honestly, it's, it's, it's not something you typically see in new developments unless it's intentionally done. You know, it's what we all experience in, well, not we all. Those of us who live in traditional neighborhoods experience it in, in the heart of the city. But it's, it's something we're excited about bringing to, to the community. And we're really looking forward to, to seeing the parks presentation and, and having the opportunity to work on that in a coordinated way moving forward. So I'll open it up.
Yeah, I just want to say how proud I am of the work that has come to date. I think our original goal is for mixed income development. And this hits the mark based on what we're seeing to date. You know, I want to, I think Sarah Roberts, she played an instrumental role on our small business recovery team back in March of 2020, when that first hit, with our chambers of commerce and a few other business leaders. So when she brought up March 2020, I think all of us kind of get a little itchy because those were some confusing times. But thank you for your work on that, to, to really prop up our small businesses. And, you know, I, it seems that this council is enjoying being a part of generational projects in 240 new mixed-income homes in the core of the city is certainly a generational project and certainly a generational opportunity for us to be a part of. So I'm, I'm excited to partner with Ms. Roberts. I'm excited to partner with Turner Behringer on this project. And just want to start by saying many thanks to our city staff, Bradley Kent, your entire team, Jennifer, for all of your work to date on this vast project that's going to have significant impact. A couple of questions I have is, I know that you've talked about the architectural standards and designs. That's something I look forward to kind of seeing a little bit more about. I think that, a, as we mentioned in our last presentation, we want to ensure that neighborhoods are being built to last. And I know that in your marketing materials and in your initial presentation, that is a shared goal of yours. But look forward to seeing that kind of get developed in the weeks ahead to, to more fully understand kind of your vision for the quality of build. No need to comment on that, but any, any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say some of the, you know, a lot of the emphasis is on quality of materials, as you would imagine, because that obviously impacts the longevity of the homes. Green spaces, landscaping, lighting, those types of standards. There, there are standards around road widths, the, the tree spacing, the public lighting spacing, all that kind of stuff, just to create the sense of place. There are also something that's kind of unique, I, I think, I don't, I'm not aware of any, at least in our neck of the woods, is, you know, part of traditional neighborhoods are really characterized by not having the same house over and over and over and over and over and over and over. And, and that helps preserve the value long time, long term. And so there is some language around like the, the number of different styles that need to be in a block or, you know, the spacing. There are requirements for front porches and front stoops to draw people outside. The goal is that it's not a neighborhood where people, you know, garage doors go up, garage doors go down, and then you never see your neighbors, you know? So th- those are, those are some of the concepts. But our, our, our chief designer, lead designer is Jim Adams. And I'm sure we would be happy to have him visit at any point with you guys. He's excellent.
One of the other things that Jim has done very nicely, that Sarah mentioned garage doors going up and down. You know, he's focused almost exclusively on rear-loaded homes, which means the garage is in an alley-served location. And it's pretty remarkable about how that creates a different environment of a front porch, that people want to be outside and people feel safe in those open spaces because car traffic is pretty limited out in front of your home. And that's something as well that, that Sarah referenced in traditional neighborhood design is shown to really generate community and togetherness. So I, I think I'm excited for Waco to see what that holds as well. And definitely kudos to the team on that one.
On the landscaping, the, I'm assuming there'll be requirements for public and private landscaping as well. I, I see what looks like sketches of trees in here.
That's an unfortunate thing about the fact that we have the building up there. And I will make sure you get the one with the greens. So a lot of the white on there are actually green spaces.
Okay.
So the, like where Burnett, where Cleveland, the second block where Ross, that big arch, all of those are public green belts that connect through the property. So those would be completed as part of our delivery of the subdivision. And, and then obviously you would also have individual requirements for the home builders, commercial, or commercial builders that are building the individual improvements that are, that are coming out of the ground. So there's, there are street trees. Those street trees are not the count of total trees in the development. Those are just the ones based on spacing and linear footage of roads. The green belts also would have about another acre scattered throughout the 60 acres of, of open space.
Awesome. For the multifamily, are there going to be similar design standards for high-quality around that? I like the, I mean, kind of.
Yeah, there are, there are. I mean, so right now, the concept we have there is a concept, obviously depending on which multifamily developers purchase those sites, would depend on what ends up there. What we have there are kind of a, like a courtyard-based design, which would be a smaller footprint, two or three stories, so that it's not, that it's, that it's compatible with the neighborhood around it. And, but that, that could certainly change. But the quality of materials will still be, they will still be under design standard, design overlay, as with the commercial. So, yeah, that, that, that is overarching for the development, whether you're residential or one of the other uses.
For the commercial spaces, what's your kind of high-level visioning for teneting of that? I know it's early, but like, it's like a concept.
Well, I will say, if you go all the way back to the very eloquent RC, we talked a lot about the fact that this quarter of Valley Mills is obviously anchored, it's, it's less than two, a mile and a half from two big boxes. You already have HEB, you already have Lowe's. You're not going to likely put a big box unless it's some sort of new concept to our marketplace. And so our, our original goals and thoughts are that this would be much more neighborhood-serving. You know, obviously you have the amenity of Waco Creek, which offers up great opportunities for really like a quality-of-place destination, for food, beverage, all those things. So our, our goals have primarily been focused around that. But I think retail obviously is an ever-changing world. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, two or three years from now, as the houses are in place and, and we're seeing those developers come out of the ground, what would, what would be there? But our goal was neighborhood, commercial neighborhood.
Boutique grocery seems to be ideal. My wife would appreciate me throwing that out of the possibility.
A lot of people would love a, a small local grocery bin.
The, the last thing I had is, you know, we just finished up the conversation on affordability. And obviously, we don't have the financing or price points for these, the lots or the houses yet. But I think that that's something that we'll look forward to seeing as those get further developed. But from what I'm seeing, I think that it'll be interesting, like I look forward to seeing kind of what those price points are. I know that we'll be able to discuss that as y'all finalize your terms and your price points.
You bet. And I can say, just as an overarching strategy, one of the things that we looked at going all the way back to the original data analysis for, for how we started the site concept was just a simple mathematic formula, which is in order to get the house to be a certain dollar amount, you have to sell the lot for a certain dollar amount. Lots are 20% of home prices. I think it's frankly wherever Galen is. It's exactly what he was presenting on, right? Like the whole reason you would do that site development strategy is if you can get the lot price low enough, then the home price will be low enough. And so part of what we've been working on with Kent and with city manager Ford, not Bradley, is that, is that, is tools to keep the lot prices down so that you can pass those on to the builders, who will then be able to pass a more affordable option on to the home buyer. And, and obviously, the smaller the lot, the lower you can get the price, even if the footprint of the house is still pretty compatible with what people are used to in, in other larger lots. And so, so all of that works together. Part of the higher density is, is around affordability as well. So, yeah.
Let me dominate to start everybody. I'm sure others have questions.
I know, I felt like council member Palmer and Galen. Lots of questions.
So, thank you, Sarah, for sharing this, this information. What a, what a boon for District 2. I mean, I think that, that exactly what we've been, been asking for is what we're looking at in this space. I'm so excited, you know, as we do, we as council, the chamber of commerce, do these inner-city visits and you see how communities in other cities are built, they look like this. And, you know, the case way is copy and steal everything. So, you know, I think we've done a great job bringing in newer types of developments. So the diversity of concepts is, I, is one of probably my favorite parts about this development because you have all people, all kinds of people with all different types of housing needs. But I may want to be in the core, or I may want to be within a walking distance to, you know, traditional neighborhoods. But, you know, I want to live in a walk-up brownstone, you know? And I wa, I don't mind sharing a wall, but I want to live in something that's structured, not like an apartment. So it gives me options. I think, you know, that's one of the things. We want to, I, I think as we create and develop new neighborhoods, we want to avoid the Stepford neighborhood where everything looks alike. And, you know, it's just a, a blink in one and you've seen them all. And I think that this, this does just that. And, you know, I mean, I know this is a sketch.
Pretty picture.
But, you know, I, 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 I can't wait to see what the advancement looks like. I appreciate the landmark and heritage residential pieces and that they have a limited number in there. I also like where the thoroughfares, the entry points. It, it is surrounded by our, the, what looks to be the cottages and brownstones. I mean, so it, it kind of, of leads to give people who want traditional housing an opportunity to not be in the.
Right.
Main dragway. And so I think it, it looks very smart. I mean, and then with the integration of the commercial spaces, I don't, I don't know if Ms. Meek is, I, I don't know. But good play, though. But I don't know what that's going to look like. Hey, man, put it out there. You know, but I think that there's wonderful opportunities just to build around those community-facing commercial businesses that, that make that neighborhood a sense of place for even the people visiting the city park, for the people who are using, utilizing the trails, but specifically for the neighborhood. I think that the, shout out to city staff for the design standards that we've set. Because now, there's a precedent. And, and, and people, people like Turner Behringer and, you know, the other, other entities that you deal with know what we expect. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's to be believed that the, the high quality that we expect for our houses and our residents will be put forth in this development. The connectivity to, you know, the city-funded entities, you know, like the park and, and, and the hike and bike trails, you know, everything will be well-lit and, and, and maintained in a manner that, that this can be generational in development. You did say you would get us this because I really do want to see kind of how, a, a, up close and live, what, what the, the pocket spaces look like. Because I think, you know, for communities like this, where you have multifamily living, those are the more, probably some of the more important things. Because, you know, I may not want a standalone traditional home, but I want a place to be, for my kids to play. I want a place, you know, for those kinds of things. So I look forward to seeing that. But wonderful presentation. I'm excited about this. And, and super excited for the growth in. I'm excited about this, um, and, and super excited for the growth in District Two.
And just as a reminder, we're not done yet. There's more. We've got a parks presentation as a part of this.
That's right.
I'll, I'll just chime in and just sort of echo, uh, Andrea's observations. It's a beautiful model, Sarah, great presentation, just for urban sort of, it's greenfield, but it's also infill. Like you said, it's, it's not in a cornfield, but it is in, in, in the, in the heart of the city here. And it's not only, uh, it's a neighborhood, but it's complementary to the neighborhood. And I think it's also, it strengthens the overall, uh, area. So I'm, I'm excited about giving, this is, I think this is what, uh, council's been, uh, asking for and, and very much along the lines of our original vision here. Uh, I like the, the different, the living styles that you're addressing, the different price points that, that you're, you're talking about here. The retail and commercial, I'd forgotten that that was going to be part of this, uh, frontage over there, so that looks, uh, great. Um, and again, I think as Kent said, the frosting on the cake now is this beautiful park right, right next to it. But Sarah, thanks for you and the, and the Turner guys getting this thing going.
Sarah, this is beautiful and I echo everything that's been said. A couple of quick questions and thoughts. Um, I'm curious if there's discussion on having some of these maybe 10% be workforce units, so that way really we have the wide scale of affordability?
What, how do you define workforce?
Can I phone a friend?
I think, I mean, for me, I think from that perspective, we haven't seen what they're proposing to charge the lots for. And I think that's not going to be what we're seeing throughout the rest of the market.
Yeah.
And so if y'all have an intentionality to charge lots at less than what the market is demanding, which again, I, I think that that's something that when we look at, I think we just need to see what you're proposing to charge the market, because we might say like all of these are technically workforce housing based on, um, we, we just don't, we don't have the, the price points in which you're planning to charge the lots to understand then what the housing, your projections to cost. So I think that, for me, the affordability component comes into, until we know what your, your financial, your financials are, that conversation feels like that, that could happen after we, we see those.
But, but I would say Councilmember Palmer, um, overarching, our goal was to be 15 to 20% below market on lot prices. Now, the thing that becomes a bigger skew, like if you look at the average lot price, it's actually quite a bit less than 15 to 20% because the lots are also smaller.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, so the zero lot, the brownstones and the cottages are all significantly lower than what you would put a similar square footage on off of Richie Road.
Okay.
Even if it's in the city.
Where we get the price points back and we're like, workforce, this is, like there's workforce.
Or like we can do some down payment assistance and to try to intentionally bring people in.
And we would welcome strategies about how to get different, um, accessibility to that even at the starting price points, right?
Okay.
Um, because, just because some things are affordable doesn't mean that you have the down payment, right?
Yeah.
So, um, so yes, um, but, but yes, as a, as a overarching goal, um, lot prices are priced in a, below market, which I am assuming is what you mean for workforce housing. I would say basically red and above is kind of in that category.
Okay, awesome. My next question is just seeing all of the short-term rentals that have become really saturated in South Waco, I wonder if there's something we can do to prevent that in this area or like in this development, so that way these really are residents that are living here and are investing and are getting to know one another. Um, my other thought with this is this feels like such a phenomenal model. I wonder if with some of the other things we have in the pipeline, city staff, if we need to consider adopting a cluster ordinance, so that way we can get the bang for the buck that Sarah is speaking to, um, that we can have a potentially several units like this, um, that are denser and it's driving the cost down.
Sure. I'd, I'd be excited by that potential and we'll work with Clint to kind of think through the timing on that, on the last portion. I'll let Sarah speak to the SDRs, although I'm fully supportive of something there.
I mean, certainly our goal is residence and so, um, we have, we, we wouldn't, that's not something we've been looking at as a strategy is STR.
STR?
Yes. Um, and so, um, we are happy to follow up with city management about that discussion. It frankly hasn't come into discussion because it's not part of our plan. Um, and I would say part of the reason that Clint had suggested and, and we also liked the idea of an overlay is, because an overlay, a PUD is a PUD, like you, you, you can't replicate it. It's dedicated to that site. There's nothing you can do with it. If we come up with an overlay that is a good model, you, you can throw that overlay on lots of zoning areas and it becomes a model that can be used elsewhere. So, um, so we're excited about that concept because I, I do think it lends itself for, if, hopefully we are successful and it lends itself for it being something that can be used elsewhere.
Awesome. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, Sarah, thank you for the presentation and Candace well. Uh, I'm, I'm kind of excited about, as a newcomer to this conversation, uh, excited and as someone who lives nearby, um, this, you know, it's kind of been functioning almost as a de facto public park in the time since demolition of the actual building. I'm sure, Alice, you're kind of aware of that too, people out there walking, riding bikes, flying kites, playing soccer. Um, and I like the way the park is set up along the railroad tracks. I think that makes more sense than residential right there.
I think that what says future city park, isn't that the area for the challenger, uh, park for the kids that are challenged physically and mentally? Isn't that it?
Uh, Jonathan's going to give us a briefing on via Zoom here in a minute on the future.
We're still halfway through this.
Yeah.
Park.
Yeah, well, I, I.
I think it's good to talk about the housing and then.
But you're right, Councilmember Rodriguez, it's currently a city.
And that's why I'm asking, is that not the park?
It's currently a.
That we had a council retreat said we wanted in that area. Is that not, that's not it?
Well, I think it's currently a park.
I mean, it's green land right now.
Yeah.
Nothing there.
Um, currently the, I think we're still on topic here. Let me, let me press into this a little bit and you tell me if I'm not. But the, uh, the five, and Jonathan can speak more directly into the numbers, the five to six fields we're doing at Lake Air Little League are anticipated to pair with two challenger fields at Lake Air Little League. That's what's in the bid package.
So this is not a.
You're talking about a special needs park, right?
Yes.
Oh, 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 I thought you were talking about the ball field.
No.
Yes, 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 yes.
That's what it is. I was like, yes, that's what it is.
Maybe I'm not asking it right, but I was.
About to see, you're about to see a drawing of that here in a moment.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But yeah, I, I, I do like that as a designated parkland and I like the kind of Valley Mills frontage part as commercial. I think that makes a lot of sense. One of the questions I have too is about topography. Like if you're walking along, there's kind of a street along Waco Creek there that if you're right there, you know, walking along, you see a kind of a hill upon which Floyd Casey Stadium was kind of on top of. I assume there's going to be some kind of like grading or, or leveling.
Councilmember Porter, right, you're, you're, you should be a developer. Um, that's actually the, there are two challenging places for topography. It's there and it's also, um, on the clay side, um, of the property, there's quite a bit of fall, um, going towards the future city park. Um, but we have been working with concepts, you'll, you'll notice that the, the way that houses are laid out, we've been working with concepts so that you can preserve the trees on that ridge line and not have to grade that. Uh, it's part of the reason that you, you have more of the Leonmark homes there because they will be more expensive to build. You cannot put an affordable house on those concepts. Um, and so, um, but, but because there are a lot of, you know, beautiful heritage trees there that would go if you did clear grading, we're trying to work on options to preserve that. Um, we, we have kept the alignment of Williams Landing and the, this, the, the proposal is a trail connection to the future city park that runs the length of the creek, comes through the commercial. Um, and, and there will be a section of that that requires a retaining wall because of the grade you're talking about. Um, but those, those discussions are being coordinated, uh, with the city manager's office and, and, uh, the parks team.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, because there are some, like you said, there's some great trees, some live oaks there, kind of the old kind of main entrance to Floyd Casey.
The old entrance, yeah, to the Galloway Suites.
Yeah, that's right.
You got it.
But yeah, that, that area, I don't, it's hard to describe any area of Waco as particularly very hilly, but, uh, that area is just kind of, it's, it, there's kind of some slopes and, yeah.
There's a high, a, a sharp grade and yeah, that is a challenge for that.
Really looking forward to it and really excited. This is kind of District Three adjacent, so I'm, I'm hoping my people will benefit as well.
Well, why don't we, um, if it's a good spot, oh, look there, he just showed up, uh, Johnson Cook.
Floating on the river.
Why don't we hear about the, the park portion and then, um, we'll be able to take questions as a, again, as a team. Jonathan?
Yes, thank you Bradley and Mayor and Council. It's, uh, my privilege to be here to speak to you today about an exciting project. And, um, you know, as you just mentioned, uh, it is a project that, uh, we're looking at that really affects the entire city, uh, moving forward. And I'm surfing around here to make sure I have control of this, so give me just one second. And Ashley, I do not have control, so I'm going to let you drive if that's okay. There we go. So we want to take a little bit of a zoom out here and, uh, looking as we were talking about the housing at the Floyd Casey site, but highlighted in yellow, we have really three areas with an opportunity to look at and, and look at a, a re-divisioning to make an impactful project that's going to, uh, be something for all of our districts and all our community with the Hart Patterson Track Complex, uh, former Baylor site that's now city-owned and city-used. We have the Waco Creek and undeveloped parkland area. And then at the top right, you see there's also a connection to Bell's Hill Park, a neighborhood park that's just a really pretty piece of land and historic area that, uh, sort of encapsulates the area that we're looking at here today. And on this next slide, we'll be looking at a project overview. So as I mentioned, it's an opportunity to transform more than 30 acres of public landscape and, and those types of opportunities, just as when you look at putting housing into the core, we don't come across this type of, of task and this type of, uh, opportunity much. And, and so much so, I wanted to mark that what we're looking at is quite substantial. Um, and like Mayor Meek mentioned, generational project, this is, this really describes what we're looking at, uh, because this would be the largest investment that we've ever made into Waco's park portfolio. Even with the development of Brazos Park East or, you know, the 100th anniversary for the Centennial, this will be the largest investment and, and really, uh, putting a right foot forward to give a park that everyone can enjoy. Um, as I mentioned, revisiting, revisioning of that track area, revisioning of Waco Creek and Bell's Hill Park. And first and foremost on the list is we've been working with management, but really working with the developers, that neighborhood connectivity and synergy is very important. And not just for the new houses, the synergy and the connectivity to the surrounding neighborhoods, which is just a vital neighborhood that have been long users. I know we have the South Waco Community Center, which is just a couple blocks from here. But I, I tell you, it's always amazes me of the events that they have, the amount of community support that that center has. And we know that this park will sit, feel the same from the surrounding neighborhoods. Really, um, and we just mentioned that inclusive component as we talk about challenger leagues with the fields, but this is our opportunity to come in with the playground with, um, really an inclusive style that's adaptable for everyone, for all ages, um, and really some cultural benefit as well, that we can come in and look at the history of the area. And then obviously as we talk about that French port concept with the neighborhood, the social and then the economic benefits all the way around. Uh, this is a project that really hits all the checks on the box. And then finally, I want to mention, uh, back to that word connection. We really do feel like this is a connecting cornerstone for our future wide, uh, city trail plan that we've been looking at. And I want to take a dive into that. As most of you know, um, over the past year, we have launched a citywide master trail plan. And on this next slide, we're going to look sort of in detail at what I'm talking about, how this is going to be a connection. Now, I, I know there are a lot of lines and a lot of maps here, but I'm going to walk you through this and give you a sneak peek, uh, really at what we're looking at this trail plan. Uh, we, first and foremost, we do hope to have this trail plan wrapped up. We'll be giving a full presentation, um, here in the summer. But on the left-hand side, you see a lot of yellow lines and some dotted, and this is a citywide look. And really the plan of pathways and bike paths and trails that we feel can connect and really opportunities throughout our city. And this is quite an advancement of what we had. But on this map, you see right in the middle of it, you have a red square and that is the Floyd Casey Hart Patterson Complex. So you talk about the heart of the city. Uh, this is an investment in a project that's directly in the heart and what we see are arrows and pathways coming out from this cornerstone location to where you're able to get to downtown. Now, you look at the map on the right, um, and I did pull up an old map here, it still has the stadium for reference, but the green square just to the left of that stadium, that's the park area that we're looking at. And you notice the other green areas. We have South Waco, um, over to the right, it connects to Bell's Hill, uh, Bell's Hill. You can also see Cotton Palace. But those yellow lines, uh, going up and down the Mary Avenue and Waco Creek corridor can connect you all the way to the riverfront. And likewise, if you go the other direction, it, it can connect you to Cottonwood Creek Golf Course, or the Central Texas Marketplace where we've had a lot of development with Top Golf and Main Event. And even up to Austin Avenue, uh, to where it connects into that neighborhood as well. You know, this, this project just sits right in the middle and use the analogy of a bike wheel, uh, to where you have a hub with spokes coming out. Um, it really accomplishes that. So not only is it creating a regional park and neighborhood synergy, but it's also an advancement as we work towards a citywide trail system. So I want to get you caught up to date on this next slide of the work we've been doing and really our next steps on this project. Uh, during this past fiscal year, we have been in a design contract with Happ and Associates and done several things to get us to this point. Um, first and foremost, as I mentioned, you know, there's a lot of history to this site and there was an agreement that we had with Baylor University, uh, Waco SD at one point as far as the usage of this land. So we worked with our legal teams in the termination of what was considered called the sports complex agreement. From there, we took it the next step and really started collecting that data, uh, not only about the site, but, uh, as far as the user groups and the different stakeholders and taking an inventory of the site. As you know, it, it does hold, uh, a track complex, which is still in use today that we use for our city track programs. And then also multiple schools use that for track meets and people can come out and walk that track as well. Um, from there, the next step, we, we started that analysis process, uh, to where we looked at, okay, what opportunities do we have? What constraints might we be looking at as far as the lay of the land and usage? And then we worked with Happ, uh, we sat down for those design charrettes and, and development of concepts. And that's what we're going to take a look here in the next couple slides as I get to them. Uh, we're going to be looking at those renderings, but we came out of that with the preliminary design report, just a draft and right now, I want to say concepts. And, and these concepts, our next step is first and foremost, we've got a RFQ that's going to go out, uh, for design services and construction documents. And that's what we'll really hone in on the next steps that will be coming up, uh, with what these concepts, how we get those to reality and obviously taking that neighborhood and community input as well. And then finally, as you're going to see in some of these renderings that we have, uh, one of our next steps is we have to start that floodplain engineering and permitting process, uh, building along a creekway. We have some great ideas how to enhance that creekway, not only visually, but a potential place to where we can create some still water, to where you have some water recreation activity, um, and really create more of a park-like setting with some cleared vegetation that opens up some of the limestone walls of that creek. It's some exciting times, but that's a process that we're going to be working through as far as the engineering and the permitting. So on this next slide, uh, it's a lot going on. So I definitely want to make mention of our current funding plan. Uh, in this current fiscal year, we have 2.8 million that's out for CIP for design survey and land services, and, and that's what we're working on right now. Moving forward in this next fiscal year, we have CIP requests out for $10 million for initial construction. Um, obviously we're looking, uh, to, to align to where there's symmetry with the development and the houses going in, so people who are interested in the neighborhood see what's coming in regards to the park. And then finally, over the fiscal year of '24 and '25, you know, this is a large investment and so being able to split it up amongst, uh, fiscal years can be very important, but we anticipate approximately 12.5 million for completion of the park and the total build out. As we're looking at 30, 40, 45 acres, uh, multiple park sites, uh, that's where we're looking at that cost coming in. And as I mentioned, just the biggest investment that the city has made into a park site in the parkland, which is quite exciting for us. Um, but anytime we have a project of, whether it's a neighborhood park for a million or two, or whether it's a park like this, which will be not only a neighborhood, but a regional draw, that community engagement is very important to us. And that's one of our next steps that we'll be kicking off this summer to where we'll be gearing up for our public meetings with our community members.
Stop me right there, can you hear me? Can I, can I just ask a question quickly on the current funding? It sounds like you're saying kind of break it a lot down in three, maybe four total fiscal years, but the total cost would be about 25 million, is that right? but the total cost would be about 25 million, is that right?
You're, you're correct in that. If you add all that up, uh, with our design and land costs that we have land services right now, uh, we're looking in that range of 20 to 25 million dollar investment.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that, Councilman. And, um, as we're looking at, that community engagement is very important and, and a process we're starting as we, you know, take the toll, make sure that we're on the right path. As we've been working, uh, with the, uh, design group, but we need to make sure we're talking to our user groups and our neighborhood associations, um, and stakeholders, uh, the current neighborhood as well, to make sure that we're on the right path to provide a park that's going to have maximum usability and support from our community. Uh, part of that, obviously, these days, uh, our online surveys along with the in-person public meetings, uh, will play a very, uh, a vital role in collecting that information. And, and then obviously continued collaboration with our development team. Uh, coming up, we're going to be looking at those connections to the neighborhood. So that's extremely important as well. And, and then obviously keeping this council in tune with how the project is progressing is part of that engagement process as well. So looking forward here, uh, we're going to dive in to, you know, potentially what we're looking at here. Um, and once again, it's a big area, so a lot going on, on the side. Uh, but want to highlight the Hart Patterson Track Site with the top yellow box and then the Bell's Hill Park renovation over here. And, and those are primarily the areas that we're looking at. And I've got some slides coming up to where we're going to look at individual renderings, um, of these specific areas. Uh, but on this slide, I, I want to make note of the neighborhood connections along Clay Avenue. Um, as, as we're talking about with the regional trail connection that's coming along and then the trails that are feeding into the neighborhood, it's very important as people enter from different areas, you know, that they're able to funnel into the open parkland. And so you'll see dedicated entryways that are not to scale on this map, but that is something that we're working with the developers to make sure that people are able to flow into this park. I, I do just want to mention it's just a rendering and those connections have not been fully established, but it's definitely something that we're working on. Um, and very important that there's connections from all areas, so this park is quite accessible. Um, other areas we're going to be looking at over the next couple of slides, I will mention, uh, a recreation and fitness hub at the track site, the, the creek enhancements, inclusive amenities, as Councilmember Rodriguez alluded to earlier, uh, bridge improvements. Very important as far as a pedestrian bridge, but then also we're looking at an iconic roadway bridge along Clay Avenue to add a pop across Waco Creek. Um, and then the social, cultural and economic, um, benefits and potential that we have at this park space. And finally, really looking at green space activation of parkland. And when we talk about activation, it's really important for us that we find elements that are able to really hit that activation mark 365 days a year. Uh, we want there to be continual activity in this park. You know, a hub for different activities where people come to on a daily basis is very important for us to establish. So first of all, looking at the recreation and fitness hub, uh, on this left picture, on, on the left, you see the, the track complex, which will undergo redevelopment and really a modernization, uh, to where we're able to maximize some flex space in the middle, potentially with some soccer, football field style setup, um, and opening the front side to the track up as well. If you've driven by, you know that there are bleachers that really block off, uh, the entryway into that track site. So obviously, we want to open it up and create a community pavilion that's really a front porch style pavilion. And if you look closely enough, you may can see some Olympic rings. And this is conceptual, but you know, we have the concept of an Olympic-style village. Um, as you know, uh, this was home to Michael Johnson, Jeremy Warner, a lot of those Baylor track athletes that came to be Olympians, even Will London, most recently a member of Team Waco and raced here all throughout his childhood and went on to coach here as one of the Team Waco coaches. So we had that opportunity to capitalize on some theming. And you see, we've also included some areas, some fitness courts, uh, to cross that CrossFit-style Camp Gladiator. Uh, we have some smaller, uh, footsall and soccer courts incorporated in, and then also a skate park and BMX course. Uh, right now, we have, uh, one skate park in the city of Soul Ross, which is extremely, uh, you know, it's used, heavily used. We see there's a need for a neighborhood and kids in that area, but then also the ability for some BMX features as well. Um, just an exciting area to where the whole family can come and have different options of recreation. Um, if you look at the picture on the right-hand side, um, you'll get a little more look at, at a, a style of bridge or, or, you know, really enhancing instead of just a bridge you drive over in a car every day, something that has the potential, maybe to have some lights or an artistic element to it and, and really mirrors further down to where you're able to cross that creek as a pedestrian. Um, and, and so those bridge improvements. But obviously, on that pedestrian bridge coming over, you'll see those circles of color. Um, and with another pavilion and we get to our inclusive playground area, uh, to where it'll have water features, just a very colorful visual, but also, you know, very adaptable and inclusive for all types and all ages. And that's where we see this park laying out, um, and really a draw for our whole city, creating a, a, a great park that we can all be proud of with play features that are inclusive for all. Now on this next slide, um, you know, we talked about, uh, there's a talk about, uh, you know, the backyards. Um, you know, and that theme of recreation, and I look at this rendering, um, and you can tell to where, you know, you're creating sort of a still lake overlooking some water with some family pavilions and playground, but also that backyard feel. Um, that's where that social component comes through to where, hey, let's meet up at the park, have different sitting areas and different backyard style games that can be programmed and activated, but also give the opportunity, uh, whether, you know, it's a food truck Friday, whether it's a start of a run or a race, or maybe it's a cultural celebration. Uh, those are all opportunities that we see in this green space. And if you remember, you know, it's sort of a great lawn concept. Uh, and, and this is the thing, when we went to an inner-city visit in Tulsa, I, I loved how Tulsa's gathering place of just a great lawn area. You see these in a lot of great parks around our nation to where, you know, you come in and you leave it open to interpretation, to where you can activate in different ways, uh, no matter the season, no matter the time of year. And even so, we see this in some of our parks, but we just find a great opportunity, uh, with this green space connecting to the neighborhood to where we have a great lawn area that can be activated for a variety of reasons. It's very welcoming for people to come and really keying off on that word of activation. So with that, that gives you a little bit of an overview of, of some things that we're looking at in regards to this parkland. Um, you know, I go back and want to go back a couple of slides if we can, Ashley. Um, to where we show, and I threw her off a little bit. I apologize for not being able to be there in person. Um, I did just want to mention that connection to Bell's Hill. Um, as we go further down Waco Creek, um, and we're going to look, and I want to just take a look at it, uh, one more, let's see, all right, here. Um, go back to this slide and we can sit on it. Um, go back and I really just wanted to talk about the connecting trail again. As you see, going along the creek and then connecting through, um, to where that Bell's Hill Park is. You know, it's a hidden park back there, but it's just very pretty. But we see an opportunity to connect sites going all the way down. And it's important to, you know, that neighborhood park, um, has a lot of history. So we're going to be going in there in this project as well and looking at a renovation of those park areas and how we can capitalize on the beauty of that areas to increase, uh, usage of that park as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions and happy to answer those as I can.
Any questions for Jonathan?
I'll, I'll just chime in here. Uh, Jonathan, great, this is Holmes, great, uh, presentation, Jonathan. You, you mentioned Michael Johnson and Jeremy Warner. My son Kennedy Holmes won the 100-meter dash there this morning.
There you go.
Place of legends here.
A place of legends.
Anyway.
Hey, I tell you, it's a, it's a, it's a great side and that Team Waco Track Program, uh, many kids have gone through it. So that's awesome to hear, Councilman Holmes.
Uh, the, um, uh, the, this is again a great presentation, very exciting. Um, and I just the, the, I'm having a little bit of sticker shock on the 25 mil, I guess, is what I'm, is my takeaway on this and how we, uh, it's very beautiful. I could, I believe that it probably is a $25 million park. But will this affect the priorities for other parks that we have currently in queue? I guess that, that's something that I'll, you know, as we develop this concept that I'll, I want to be thoughtful of. And just how we fund that too, is that a general fund issue or is that a bonded issue? Or how do we, how do we do this?
It'd be part of our FY '23 and '24 capital improvement program budgets. So it would not affect any existing funded projects like say, um, I don't know, a China Spring Park perhaps, which is already funded.
You can see through my.
I don't know, perhaps I thought maybe you were talking about that. But, um, no, it wouldn't impact existing funded projects. But it would be a major, major lift as part of the FY '23 and '24 overall CIP. Um, it would be, um, you know, if, if we talk about doing a program similar to what we've done in last year's budget, which was approximately what, Nick, a $50 million general fund-supported CO issuance, it would be 20% of a similarly sized year in two consecutive years.
Jonathan, this is awesome and so beautiful. My, uh, only concern looking at this as someone that is not a native Texan and tries to survive May through October every year is the amount of shade we're offering. Um, a lot of this just looks really open, which is great in that it can be activated for lots of different spaces. I'm just imagining being out there when it's 105 and like if they're, especially if we really want, you know, families to be here where parents are going to sit so they're cool while kids are running around.
No, that, thank you, that's a great point and, uh, I sunburn easier than most people. So I definitely understand. Um, this is from our preliminary design report. And, and so those types of details are, as sort of like shade structures, we haven't gotten to that point. That's where we would be heading, um, as we go into the conceptual and construction documents. But those are definitely details that we'll be adding into this project. Um, you know, there, there's a good bit of trees around the tracks, some great oak trees around there, but in the open area, there is not a lot of shaded trees. So shade structures definitely will be on our list as we look to incorporate those into the open areas.
Awesome, love that, thanks.
Yeah, this looks great, Jonathan. Excited about it. Uh, you know, hopefully we can figure out the financials. Um, but yeah, I, I, it does seem like there's a pavilion there and a splash pad. But yeah, I, I, that's probably the perennial Texas summer, uh, heat coming in. I, I don't, uh, to that point, it looks like there's some things that, you know, can make it, the heat livable. But, uh, it's exciting and hopefully for our kind of more eight bearable months of the year, this will be a great opportunity.
Uh, only comments, uh, well, no, I have a question. Uh, on the park, inclusive park, is that going to go at the same time this construction is going to go on? Or, or is that not in part of this?
Um, Jonathan, uh, let me preface a response here and you can clean it up. Um, it would be the manager's hope that we would start with the inclusive playground and splash pad. What do you think?
No, that, that would definitely be the focus and really a centerpiece here. Um, that's something that definitely has been discussed for a long time. We're making strides on, on the challenger ball fields with the current funded project that we'll be coming to you very soon, um, about. But this inclusive playground and splash area, that, that is really one of the priorities of this project.
Uh, another comment or question of Bell's Hill Park, since you brought it up. Uh, that's a beautiful old park. It's been there forever, I think, because I remember going to it and I remember going to the baseball fields, the baseball field that is there. Uh, to me, it's a, a dangerous area because of the train and the railroad tracks. The creek that's there, it bothers me that our kids can run into that creek and it's a big, open creek. Uh, I don't know how deep it is, but on 26th Street, it is pretty deep. Uh, I'm just wondering if we have thought about that and what we're going to do. But maybe that's a one-on-one later on with myself and maybe Jonathan Cook to let me know what's going on with the Bell's Hill Park, uh, renovation. That, because that is a beautiful, old historic park. If you've ever been there, you'll see that it is a beautiful old, and it's a small park. It's not a big park. It's a smo, small park.
Yeah.
But that, that's, uh, I've already said, I'm excited about what's, what's proposed, uh, here for District Two. I know our constituents are going to be real happy when they see, uh, there is movement in District Two, not just on University Parks Drive or in the Baylor area, but in the heart of District Two. So I'm excited about this as well. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. And thanks to Kent and Sarah for your time today. We so appreciate it. Great work to our entire team, Jonathan. Excellent work, um, on this. And again, um, a rare opportunity for a council to see so many generational projects come before our desk. And I'm thrilled to get to play whatever role we do in seeing this to, uh, become reality. Um, so with that, I'll ask if there's any requests for future gen items. If not, we'll recess the work session, reconvene the regular session for executive session as read into the record by our interim city secretary at 5:27. And we do have an executive session we need to cover today, so if we can be prompt to get back there, let's try.